After he retires. So, thank you, Ron.
(laughing).
(applause).
So, Ron, don't go yet.
Let Ron leave either, actually.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah.
What I want to say really quickly is that I think your greatest characteristic is your integrity. You're above all else, of course, a wonderful public servant, but a man of honor and honesty. And you love the city of Lockport, and that comes through. And also, you know, I felt anyway that you were almost like a ninth alderman. You know, sometimes when issues arose, you took opportunity to stand up for what was right for the city, and that meant a lot to me and I'm sure to the others. So, we're going to miss you greatly. You know, I feel like, I feel like a little nervous that you're leaving because you're such a strong...
Not with Tom's.
I know Tom's great, listen. I know Tom's great, but today's not Tom's day. So, and I'm sure the rest of the residents feel this way as well, who know you and love you, that, you know, there's a certain sense of insecurity now that you're going because you're an elder statesman to the city in many regards, and you come from a long line of Canivas who have done so many great things for the city of Lockport, and you're just adding to that wonderful legacy that you're faring out to the city. So, thank you.
(applause).
I can't let my right-hand man go without saying anything. I truly have been honored and blessed to be working with you for the last six years. I didn't think I'd be sitting here without you, but I am. And there were so many things I thought of about you, and they've all been said here, and I'm sure there's much more, but I think I summed them up to you being a grand man.
Thank you, Alice.
One more. The mayor alluded, said that someone told him, "You're a great friend as long as they don't get on your bad side." I don't believe you have a bad side. You are the kindest, most patient. You never belittle anyone, no matter how ridiculous the question is, you make them feel as if, no, that's really something you need to know, and you always had time. I don't know where you found it, but no matter what questions I'm sure anybody here ever had for you, you took the time to answer them until we understood them, and I'm going to miss you terribly, and you're just a wonderful person. Thank you.
And one more. Now, just really quick, Ron, it's obvious you love the city of Lockport. I just want to let you know, the city of Lockport loves you. Thank you for your years of service.
All right, we can let us move where Ron go.
That hat's not going to fit in, Mayor.
We'll never quite always be gone. We've got his phone number, we have his wife's cellphone number, we have his cellphone number, so.
Very good. All right. Yes, on his card. Well, moving along. Pam, you want to talk about the shop Lockport business spotlight for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Tonight, we meet first night in our series of each evening in which we do the shop Lockport business spotlight. And tonight, we have three businesses on the agenda, the first being Hollyworth Candy, which is located at 922 South State Street in the downtown area, as well as Old Town Cafe located at 111 South State Street, and Victory Leathers located at 123 East 9th Street. Unfortunately, the first two, Hollyworth Candy and Old Town Cafe, had canceled this evening for weather reasons and an unexpected family situation. I have, and I will be working to reschedule them for a future meeting. But this evening, Ginger and Eddie, the owners of Victory Leathers, are here to see me to kind of give you and the public watching a little bit of a view on who they are, what they're all about, and what they are for the community.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Ginger, and this is Eddie. We own Victory Leathers. Our first location opened four years ago in Palatine, and last May, we decided to open up in Lockport. We sell motorcycle apparel.
We have alterations. We do alterations for motorcycle stuff, jackets, even if you don't ride, we do alterations for jackets, pants, and we sell accessories for motorcycles and everything.
We sell on patches, we sell jewelry.
The mayor's been in our shop a couple of times. He's a nice guy.
I should have bought my fur line chaps for tonight.
There you go.
We really thank Lockport for giving us the opportunity to open up our second location. You know, we are very happy with it, so.
And also, too, I just want to add that they're very community-oriented in that if there's events or interaction with businesses amongst the downtown people, they're willing to post things on their Facebook and give community events out. So, we're really happy to have them here in our community.
Absolutely. Thanks, Eddie. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to meet you, Ginger.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. One thing I want to mention, something Alderman-Deskin's been working on. Enough of those of you are familiar with the Lincoln Funeral Train. Obviously, you know, when President Lincoln was assassinated, his train came from (inaudible) came down through, actually, Lockport on its way to Springfield to bury the president, and I believe the son was on the train as well, who had died. And there's a train that's been rebuilt to look just like it. It's a replica. It has the locomotive, it has the funeral car, and it has the officer's car. And it is going to be making its rounds throughout the country on the same route as the original Lincoln train went. Alderman-Deskin's been, I asked him to kind of look at that and see if there was a time when possibly he could stop in Lockport. Maybe we could do it in conjunction with Old Canal Days or something, and we've been looking into it, and it's very interesting. It's actually a little pricey to get it here, so Jack has been looking at some grants and maybe some other ways that we can make that happen. But I just want to say thank you, Alderman-Deskin, for all the hard work you've been doing to see if that's a possibility or not. We'll see if it's something that can't happen this year, it might be able to happen next year, but it'd be very interesting, and because the train came through town, I think a lot of folks would appreciate it and have a very special, unique opportunity. So, thanks again, Darren, for looking into that. Alice, what do you got going on?
I have the executive session meeting of minutes review and release that was attached to your packet. It shows Schedule A, which are the minutes that are to remain confidential, as well as Schedule B, which are the minutes that are being released. If anyone has any questions about that, it will be on the next agenda to be approved.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions? All right. Pam, what do you got?
Yes, thank you. This evening, we have the rezoning, special use, preliminary development plans for the property generally located between, or west of I-355 between Archer Avenue and 143rd Street, commonly referred to the Highlands of Lockport. The athletes are present this evening, and would like to give a brief presentation.
Mayor, I believe we're having technical difficulties on the PowerPoint, so we apologize that you won't be able to see as many of the beautiful pictures that we would like to show you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah, we don't know what's...
We need a copy of the PowerPoint.
Yeah, what I thought was maybe we could put it on our website.
Yeah, it's actually saved on this computer.
Okay.
And actually, Ben, for some reason, tonight, I do have a back here. If he wants to go through and talk about it, the rebroadcast will have it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
That's fine. Why don't we do it that way?
That's fine. I'll just walk through here, and I can see it on this screen here at least, which is helpful. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out on a cold night. My name is Tim Grogan, and I am Equibase Capital. We have been working on this property for a couple of years with staff, who's been wonderful, and even with Ron, who's been wonderful to work with as well. We've been involved for a long time, so I've gotten to know him, and I really wanted to say thank you to him as well because we've gotten pretty far over this last couple of years. Our plan for this property, and I wish you could see it on the screen, I know, hopefully you have the site plan in your package, but Equibase Capital is a real estate development investment firm. We have, you know, many, many years of experience. We've built developments coast to coast, all aspects of types of construction, residential, apartments, retail, office, high-rise, warehouse, so we have a pretty diverse experience. I have some examples of existing projects which I won't go through in detail since they're on the screen here. Most recently, we have completed a 220-unit development in Algonquin, which was Class A rental apartments. And about two and a half years ago, I came and started having this conversation about rezoning to a mixed-use development for this property. As everyone knows, originally was zoned for a big-box retail, which, given what happened to the economy, and also given the topography of the site, it was very difficult to execute that plan, even in a good economy. The land development costs there for retaining walls and masquerading were just tremendously high. So, we looked at the product that we were developing in Algonquin, and there's some pictures in the PowerPoint which everyone can take a look to see. Works well with the topography that exists there. So, we were able to develop a plan that takes advantage of the topo instead of fighting the topo. The buildings are all two stories on the end, three story in the middle, with two steps in each building, so we pick up four feet in grade as we slowly come down the hill. And then, we have retail outlets along the front. And the product we're building here is exactly what we're doing in Algonquin. It's 100% Class A, brick, I think we're 75% masonry on our exterior, hardy board, interiors all granite, countertops stainless steel. We're not building a second-rate development here. This is all first-rate, and I welcome anybody to drive to Algonquin Square off of Randall Road and see the product in person. We're very proud of it. We, in that development, we started 220 units, a little, one building smaller than here. Start to finish was 13 months from construction to the last building. We reached 100% occupancy in six months, which was about 12 months sooner than we expected, and we actually currently have a waiting list for people that are trying to live there. So, we're very proud of that. And we've taken that concept, we've improved it here. One of the mistakes that we made there is the swimming pool wasn't large enough, so we've addressed that in this development. We've increased the size tremendously. We have a dog park facility on this, which we didn't have there. So, you know, we're trying to adapt to the market and adapt to the demographics of who we think are going to live here and provide those amenities for everyone. The clubhouse is, you know, is all first-rate. We're working on several developments like this around the country. The clubhouse experience in a rental apartment, a Class A, has evolved. It's not just a pool and a pool table and a desk. There's theaters, there's business, there's lounges for people to hang out, there's outdoor recreation areas, including barbecue and bocce ball, and all those kind of amenities are being built in what we're developing now. So, and I do have some renderings here in the PowerPoint that I've invited everyone to see. With the development plan, and we've taken quite a bit of time to get to this point, and we've done that for a lot of reasons. We wanted to make sure that we were executing something that we're sure can succeed economically, and also to work with the city. Originally, we, the sewer and water for this property is located at our property line, so it needs a lift station. We could have very easily put it on our site and service just our site. It was kind of short-sighted, so we worked with the city for literally about the last 18 months collectively to move the lift station downstream somewhat so it can service multiple properties, and it becomes a regional lift station that benefits everybody. So, we delayed our development to make sure that that could work for everyone involved, and it's been a tremendous success with staff to try and get that, and so collectively, as the city's moving forward with those development plans, as we're moving forward with ours. So, hopefully, we start, everyone starts, we have everything finished at the same point in time. One of the questions that came up early on is the amount of whether or not we have public or private roads within the development. Most of them are private, so we will own and maintain them. There'll be a declaration of covenants between the multifamily and the commercial outlets, so for shared road maintenance and expense, for detention pond maintenance expense, when we come in for final, all those documents will be in place, and so there's no issues with maintenance over time. The main road that connects through the property is scheduled to be public. It's designed to be, it's got an 80-foot right-of-way, so it meets the guidelines of Lockport. All of our interior roadways, turning radiuses, all those have been addressed. They meet all the fire department, turning radius minimum, so we're covered on that. One of the comments in the design was concern about a couple of our buildings accessing the public road directly. So, we've eliminated three of those access points so that there's better traffic movement within. We've conducted a full traffic study, and our traffic engineer is actually here tonight if there's any questions when we get to that point. The architecture, again, it's masonry, it's got some limestone features on it, you know, Class A exteriors. The elevation, I was, on my screen right now is very beautiful, I'm very proud of it. When we get to final design, we'll work with staff to make sure on exterior brick selection, color selection, just to show everyone what we're doing, so everyone can see not just the color rendering, but we'll actually bring in physical examples of the colors that we're going to propose for construction. We have some pictures of the interiors of Algonquin, so you can see in real life exactly what the interiors look like. There's an elevation rendering of the clubhouse facility and some interior shots of the clubhouse as well, the pool, exercise, the lounge. We will have some freestanding garage structures for indoor parking, and there's an elevation within the document here for that, some architectural renderings, and actually some photographs of Algonquin's, so you can kind of see exactly what it is. One of the unique features that we've incorporated, not just in this development, but really all developments we're doing around the country right now, is it's a valet trash removal service. So, we don't have trash receptacles scattered amongst the development. We have one centrally located, and alls you do every night at 6:00 is put your garbage outside your front door, and the maintenance staff comes through and gathers it, brings it to the back, puts it in a compactor. So, we reduce the amount of waste we're hauling away because we're compacting it. We don't have to worry about it blowing around or people running over or leaving the doors open. It's centrally located in the back so that it really is a benefit to the residents because they don't have to go out in the snow, and, you know, the reality is they get close and it's cold out, and they just kind of whip it, and then a bag breaks and garbage blows around. So, we solve that problem, and it's a definite improvement, and it's an amenity for the One of the comments at the plant commission was our landscaping. So, in this document, we've incorporated a couple of those issues into our plan. One of them, we have 12 buildings, and the original plan was that all the buildings, we had the identical landscape plantings around the buildings. One of the requests was to add more variety to that. So, in our final design, we are going to have multiple plans, but not every building will be exactly the same, different color, different size, different shapes of plantings. And one of the other comments was trying to bring in some of the historic elements of Lockport into our design. We have a large retaining wall along the entrance, and, you know, if you look at the planning guidelines from Lockport, and we have some examples in here from the city's guidelines. So, what we're going to try and do is use these guidelines for our entry monuments and as far as some of the retainings to incorporate some limestone outcroppings, limestone entry monuments that kind of bring in the historic nature of Lockport. And since we're right kind of at the, at the front door off 355, we thought in final design, we could work with staff to maybe at the beginning of the development, put on this limestone outcropping, "Welcome to Lockport," or some, try and incorporate some welcome feature, not just to our property, but to the community itself, and we think that's a pretty easy thing, and we think it benefits everyone. I have a document on the, on the traffic study that we've done. One of the questions was raised whether or not we were warrants for a traffic signal at each, at either entrance. The answer is no, and we can go into more detail about the traffic study. When this was originally a big-box retail, and you look at traffic volumes on a Saturday morning, which is a peak volume for a retail center, it's significantly more than a peak volume for a weekday, you know, 7:00 to 8:00 a.m., which is kind of the peak time. So, when you look at the amount of people that will be leaving here at that peak compared to a retail, you know, it is, you know, 80% less volume. So, there's no way that we would meet a warrant for a signal through IDOT. Our locations, our intersectional locations have already been approved by IDOT, so we have our geometry worked out, so we know what the center lines are. We know we're not going to meet the warrant, so once we go to final design, we'll finish our intersection design, submit for our permits, you know, which unfortunately could take six months or eight months, or you never know with IDOT. So, our goal is, once we get through here, is to move to final engineering as quickly as possible, because, you know, with EPA for sewer and water permits, all the historic we have to do, NPDS permits, and most importantly, the IDOT permits, we want to get those in as soon as possible, because, you know, that could, our hope would be to start construction sometime in fall, but if those permits get delayed too long, you know, we might have to push into spring. So, it's, we have a lot of strong incentive to get through, get to final design, and submit for permit as quickly as possible. And, you know, I, I'm sorry, I've been pretty rapidly going through this. It's hard when you can't see what I have on the screen here, but we're very proud of it. We're very excited to be here. It's been a long, winding road to get here, but I think collectively, we've developed a plan that we're very proud of, and I think it'll be a great asset for your community. So, I welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you, Tim. You know, I just wanted also to thank Tim and his staff. You know, I almost want to give him an honorary city manager certificate because he's kind of dealt with three city managers here at the city of Lockport over the last few years in developing this property. And many times when we would go to him to ask for things, he was already prepared and knew the types of things that we were going to be asking for, so he's very well-practiced at his craft, and we appreciate working with the petitioner. In your packet, you'll see several memos tonight, one from Ron and I, one from Christiana and Pam. There's a lot of detail here. Tim has highlighted quite a bit of it. You know, some of it was more complicated, getting FPA amendments with CMAP was complicated, you know, doing this regional lift station that benefits the greater region. He was very humble in mentioning the budget, but he actually increased his budget $500,000 up to 2.25 million from the original 1.75 million to help make this a success. So, I think a lot of credit goes to Tim and his preparations for this project. There's information in your packet highlighting option one and option two, and I just wanted to talk about those a little bit. The other interesting caveat to this was the land cash values that need to be satisfied with all the government entities even beyond Lockport, in particular, the Park District. You know, the Park District worked with us and lowered their values a little bit for us to help it, you know, get a satisfactory number with the petitioner. We also have been working with the Illinois Tollway on the assemblage of some leftover parcels. And Tim's investment group has always negotiated this opportunity on a single-budget concept. Again, when he came in, he was looking to be at about 1.7 in fees to all the government bodies. We've got him up to 2.25. And what we were able to do to order him to close is kind of take the risk that we're going to be able to acquire those parcels. And so, you do see two options. The reason we have that in there is we wanted to give him the finality of the opportunity to close and get going on this project. We didn't want to lose another year of construction waiting for our negotiations with the Tollway to transpire and get those. So, in a way, we're, you know, adding a little risk to this that we don't normally have in regards to the cash flow that we would receive at the end of the day of the project. But those are, again, highlighted in here is option one and option two. Frankly, if we get the parcels that we believe we're going to be able to acquire in preliminary conversations with them, the city ends up netting about $546,000. If we are not able to do that, then we will have to use some of those funds provided by the petitioner to satisfy the requirement with Lockport Township, and the city's net proceeds fall to $372,000. Either way, there is appropriate amount of money in there to develop this regional lift station, including basically a reimbursement for upfront engineering that we've already spent with Strand to help plan and design this water project for the region, and the additional building permits and engineering fees and those types of things. So, you know, I don't know if you really wanted me to go through the entire memo in its entirety, but it's a good project, and we're all here, I guess, to certainly take any questions from any of you that you may have. And we will certainly put this information in these PowerPoints and PDFs up on the website, and we'll be able to broadcast them at a later time.
All right, counsel, any questions?
Well, I went through it all, and I think it sounds like a wonderful development, and I thank you for your patience as well as realizing how difficult, apparently you already knew how difficult it is to deal with all these government agencies, so.
I didn't get this gray hair from...
Yeah. Age.
So, just for the benefit of the public, in your fiscal impact study, you indicate, so everyone knows, we're going to have about 500 temporary jobs as a result of this project, about 140, those are temporary construction jobs and about 140 permanent jobs. Also, there's a retail component to this on the exterior of the project, so we're looking at restaurants, perhaps a gas station, and there's a lot of people that would love to see a gas station up near, closer to 355. I mean, you've got to drive downtown to get to a gas station, and also potentially office space and a hotel.
Yes.
So, there's a lot of potential for this area. I think it could bring a lot of great things to the city of Lockport. One question I do have on the retail, the access to those outlets would be on the internal roads. You wouldn't get to them.
Yes.
Okay. And one last question, the garage material, it wasn't clear from the elevations, is that...
It's all hardy board.
It's all hardy board.
All hardy board.
Okay, good. All right, great, so, thank you.
Yeah, and I did fail to mention that the fiscal impact, because even for the schools is cash-positive, so this is really a win-win for everyone involved.
All right, anything else?
If I could just also add something, I think the benefit of this project, too, is that it's going to really set the stage for what we're going to expect the Archer Avenue corridor to look like as we move forward into the future. And so, from staff's perspective, you know, we appreciate that because it's hard sometimes when you start trying to change a corridor and getting the first guy in to buy into, you know, higher quality materials and higher quality design. And so, this project will certainly help us as we do move forward and take on new projects in that corridor.
I'd also like to thank Ron Reposh, one of our citizens and business owners in the town. He has a smaller subdivision in the region and has also worked with us in order to locate our regional lift station on his property, and has conveyed property to us, and will also be making a $200,000 contribution to the construction of this project. It's in trade for a discounted tap-on fee for that small subdivision, but us taking advantage of those funds now instead of later was good for him and also good for us in our bottom line on this project, so I just wanted to make that, it's in your packet.
I want to say that I know that the planning for this has been going on for a long time, and that in Mayor Trevetti's administration has started, and with the, and with the water relocations and all of that, so it's good to see that it's coming to fruition.
Very, I'm very proud to be here tonight.
And staff has made several trips to Algonquin and seen this product face-to-face, and it is a wonderful product.
Just put it on as an action item for next week. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Stay warm tonight.
All righty. Mr. Ben Benson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The other item I have on here is the DCO lighting grant application. The Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity through the Illinois Energy Now grant offers rebates to public facilities that making equipment improvements, anything that will help save on electric usage. Energy-efficient lighting is one of those ways to do that. We were able to work out a project with a DCO trade ally. Scott Carley from SK Sales is here this evening, and I'll probably have him come up to answer just a couple of questions about the process. But basically, it's a, it's a, it's a simple rebate grant process where the city purchases these energy-saving bulbs and fixtures and has city staff go out and replace these bulbs and fixtures, and then, once we purchase those fixtures, we apply for the grant, for the rebates. We did check with the state to make sure the funding was still available, with the state of Illinois, and it is. And so, we're seeking authorization to spend approximately $67,000 on lights and bulbs and fixtures. This includes several of the buildings that we own, the Public Works facilities, City Hall here on the second floor, and this room, the sewage treatment plant, the old city hall, the CDC Center on State Street, as well as the metro parking lots. We're looking to spend $67,000. However, we expect to receive over $52,000 in rebates, so the net cost will be about $14,940, of which we feel on some basic scenarios, we will actually get back in energy savings within the first year or two.
Ben, my business took advantage of this same program, and our, all of our lights were replaced with either LEDs or the higher efficient... Ben, my business took advantage of this same program, and all of our lights were replaced with either LEDs or the higher efficient neons or whatever they are now. But they're instant on, but it didn't cost us a dime.
Hmm, okay.
I mean, the contractor that came through took care of all of that.
Sure.
I mean, is there any way we can get that same kind of a deal?
You know, we are, and I'll ask Scott maybe to come up and answer a couple of questions about this, but from what we have, some of those rebates exceed the actual cost of some of the fixtures. But for the most part, for those larger commercial lighting applications, that there are some costs involved.
Well, and I'll give you a great example on some of these lights. We had some that the ballast of our old lights were $500 apiece. And now they've been replaced with lights that the ballast are a lot less than that.
Right.
And also, they last longer, so.
More efficient and quieter. You can actually hear the humming above your heads now. Hopefully, that will be gone once we apply for this grant, get these purchases. But we've filled out the pre-paperwork, and these are the numbers that we were able to achieve. So unfortunately, we couldn't get them all for free.
I would imagine there's a lot more lights involved here.
This is quite a few lights. Yeah, this is probably well over 120-some-odd lights. What we'd like to do too is, if this is, works out well, we would like to look into possible streetlight applications where we might even look to replace streetlights. The challenge will be the historic nature of many of our streetlights. We would want to make sure that the lighting that's produced is reasonable or within its color schemes that we desire. So we didn't want to put that into this one until we could learn more about the project.
I guarantee we're going to save the money on this one. Before this, most of the tenants in my building had unscrewed about half the lights to save money, and they were too bright before. When this came in, all the lights are on, and the bill is less than that. So the savings is instantaneous.
Does anyone want to hear from the gentleman, or are we good?
The only question I have is for staff, and you don't have to have an answer for tonight, but some of the metro lot, the lights in the metro lots, I'm not sure how old they are. I know the, one of them's newer, and it's, I'm trying to think what lot is newer. Anyway, would there be a demand for any of those lights, you think, for resale on the market somewhere?
It's possible. I guess I haven't considered that. I want to look into that.
Just kind of wondering. I don't know how old they are, but if there's on the market with anybody else.
And there's also, I've heard companies, organizations donate them too. If you can't get them to sell, there's charitable organizations that need them for their facilities to help reduce their cost for repair as well. Many charitable organizations have electricians that help out as well that can offset some of the costs that might be needed to get them installed, so.
Okay. Well, if no one has any immediate concerns, do we want to put this on a consent agenda then?
That's good.
All good with that? All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, what else you got?
Probably goes to Pam, I think. Well, we've kind of talked about the Highlands, or the annexation agreement.
Will that all go into the same action item then?
Let's, I would put them separate. I would still leave them separate even though we've kind of talked about them together.
Yeah, because we have the planning and zoning items, which I discussed, and the annexation, and it's an amendment to the original one, to incorporate the new design changes and the rezoning and everything that we talked about. So that would have to have its own separate code.
Okay. They could be on consent, but they need to be separate.
All right. So we're going to put the other one on as an action item. Do we want to just...
Well, do we have, could we...
Can we put the other one on consent? Does anyone have an issue with that, the Highlands projects at all?
No.
No.
All right, then we can put all the Highland stuff under consent agenda, Alex. All right, moving along. Lisa, what do you got?
I don't have anything.
Isn't that you, Director?
Pam's verbal, yeah.
Yes, thank you. So tonight, I just wanted to kind of provide a unit development update, so that which kind of gives us a mirror and pole of what we accomplished in 2014. First and foremost, regarding housing permits and housing units, we finished off the year with 50 permits, totaling 55 units. Now, the reason why 55 is one of those permits was a six-unit building, compared to 13, in which we were at 29 permits and 29 units. So essentially, from a unit count, we've almost reached 50 per couple. So that was really great. From our new businesses in 2014, we have a total of 15 new businesses, a total of five new ownerships of existing businesses. And as we finish out the year end, we have five pending applications. What that means, they submitted for their new business application, but the occupancies have not been issued at the end of 2014. So the good news is we have five businesses that we will see very shortly in 2015. In addition to that, the reason why, oh, in 2013, we had 18 businesses, but I can't give you that breakdown because at that time, we weren't breaking down how many, how many new ownerships. But I just wanted, again, it just kind of gave you comparison of where we're at. In addition to that, we are currently, Lockport Square Outlet is going to be reviewed by the planning commissioner, and then we'll be coming to you as a workshop shortly thereafter. And then hopefully, we'll have approvals in place early February, and they can get their plans in for construction starting this year. The vacant M1 property that's east of the Panduit Concept, Panduit property is going to be coming in with a concept plan. That too is going to be reviewed by the planning commissioner on the 13th of this month, and then coming to you on the 21st for workshop discussion.
Could...
I have completed a draft listing of all businesses in Lockport.
And Pam, I think Darren had a question.
Yeah, you said the vacant M1 property.
Yes, east of Panduit.
East of Panduit. I never, I didn't know anything was going on out there.
Yes, we have, we have an industrial builder property building on the street. We have an industrial building that's coming in with a three-unit for a three-building project. And similar to what you saw recently with 163rd Street property, what used to be in ML, these buildings obviously will be a little smaller, just because the site's a little smaller. But another, you know, industrial interest and another industrial project that hopefully will start in 2014.
No, I mean, that was one of those properties that the owner just seemed like they were going to do anything with, but they showed, you know, with all the momentum going on, they just felt like it was a good time to look at it again.
I have just one question about this M1 property and your Panduit. Is there going to be, and this would be for engineering, any possibility that there would be a connection with the Lockport Square property, going through the Lockport Square property, through a frontage road or something to that property?
That's an M1. Do you want that?
Well, it's either going to be there or it's going to be on Gaga Road. So just a thought. If it's not feasible, it's not feasible.
M1 is more, it's more docks and...
Okay.
You don't want all this stuff already.
I don't think the businesses would be actually want to come in for that.
I think once you see the proposal and the types of buildings that they are proposing, one of them is going to have double docks. So potentially, you know, you don't really want to mix that type of truck traffic with people who would potentially, you know, use it to go through to Lockport Square.
When you say double docks, do you mean a regular dock with a adjustable...
No, it's basically through docks. So where some buildings will have only docks on one side of the building.
Okay.
One of their buildings will have docks on both sides.
Okay. Are any of them ground-level docks? In other words, just drive indoors?
I don't remember.
Okay.
But, I mean, and obviously, when the planning comes before you, this one first, you know, opportunities you meet for developer and then ask questions and get further clarification on.
Okay.
I've also completed a draft listing of all the businesses in Lockport. I do need to field verify them, but any dandruff on how many businesses we have in Lockport? About 350.
Wow.
And approximately 92 of those businesses are located in our downtown. And today, I determined that of those businesses, 46 are restaurant food-related. Also, I've been working on a business resource section for the website specifically geared towards, you know, existing businesses and giving them some information about financial assistance, if there's incentives or loan programs, business-related articles, and then I'm working on a starting a business guide so that it will help especially with the independent businesses, the people who think they might want to be in an independent business situation, to kind of understand some of the dynamics that go along with that. So it's kind of help them out. In addition to that, I'll be bringing forward to the council what's called the 350 Project. It's a national project, and if you want to research that, you can see it online. It started by a woman who was an independent businesswoman who wanted to create a resource for other independent businesses to get the word out about their, about what they do. And what the premise behind this program is basically to encourage all residents in the community to pick three local businesses and to make a conscious effort to spend $50 a month amongst those businesses. Because they found that, you know, for every $100 spent in an independent business situation, $60 of it goes back into the local community. As opposed to on a national chain, $44 goes back into the local economy. And obviously, when you purchase online, $0 go back into the economy. So I'll be bringing that forward, and then that information will be on the website too. The businesses themselves have to actually register for that program. I don't believe the basic, there's any cost involved. It's just a matter of contacting this organization and getting your information, you know, on their website. In addition to that, the Retail Coach will be coming to the next committee of the home meeting to make a presentation and give an update where they're at with recruiting efforts, which I was told to advise the council in advance of their coming, that with this second round of recruitment, or second or third round of recruitment that they've done, that the interest level is definitely, is definitely there, much more so than when they did their first attempt. And even with the Lockport Square property, because we get, I get copies of their marketing reports too, and it's the same thing. And Retail Coach has said that right from the beginning when they started their recruiting efforts, that don't be discouraged when the first round goes out. It's really the second and third and subsequent rounds that really start to pique people's interest, and that's definitely happened. So Retail Coach will confirm that when they come in. They will also talk about some executive summary things, about some analysis of the community and various things. In addition, Business Spotlight, though it didn't work out so well tonight, I do have the schedule filled through February 4th meeting, and do have some additional people, not a full load, but some members scheduled for the second meeting in February. It's been very well received, and the businesses that have, you know, signed up for it already are very excited to have the opportunity to do little mini commercials about who they are, what they are, and what they drink to Lockport, as well as another opportunity to get the word out to the residents of our community of some of these really unique and notable businesses that we have. In my conversations with several downtown businesses, for example, a lot of times, the response from residents who maybe have never been there before was, "I never knew you existed." And as a matter of fact, I talked to a resident just yesterday who has lived in town for 18 years, and she'd expressed some concern about when we weren't going to get some healthy options in the community, five means of grocers and restaurants. And I said, "Well, we do. We have Naked Sprouts Organic Market right in the downtown." She, and you had no idea that it had even existed. So I gave her some information and the address and told her that she should check it out, that it's definitely, you know, something she might be interested in. Lastly, I've been working with Ryan, our IT design person, creating some shop Lockport logos and banners. And banners, not in the sense of banners hanging on streetlight poles, but banners in the sense that we can use on the website, and they would be seasonal. So it would look the same in terms of the general layout, but it would be reflective of the season in place. And again, just to get the word out that people need to shop in Lockport so that we can see more and more businesses come and the ones that we have continue to flourish. And that's it.
Thanks, Pam. I appreciate the efforts. All right, moving on down. Amy.
P.E.
Yes, Amy P.E.
Amy P.E.
Okay, my item on the agenda tonight is about the Illinois 7 Frontage Road Bridge over the Des Plaines River. Last year, we hired Willett Hoffman to be our new NBIS program manager, and since then, they have been handling all of our bridge inspections for that. This year, the inspection for this Frontage Road Bridge came up, and it was discovered that the condition of the bridge was much worse than originally reported by our previous program manager. As a result, there was a request sent to IDOT for special feature inspection, and the result of that inspection was a requirement for the city to reduce the load rating of that bridge to eight tons. And we had to post it immediately and take pictures of the posting signs and send them into IDOT to be added to the bridge program. The bad part of this is that, even though this is a bridge that is rarely used, the Army Corps of Engineers is, has a $30 million project that is scheduled to start this spring, and they were anticipating using that bridge to transport material and equipment and stuff for the project. We contacted Willett Hoffman and executed a contract with them to put together contract documents for an emergency repair for the bridge to bring the load rating back up to its original load rating. And our latest cost estimate for these emergency repairs is about $120,000. Actually, it was like 112, but I kind of bumped it up a little bit just to make sure we had enough. So what I would like to do is, because of the emergency nature of this and the fact that we need to have this done as quickly as possible, I would like to get the city council to approve beforehand the expenditure of up to $120,000 for these repairs, and also to waive the bidding requirements so that instead of going through the long, drawn-out bidding process, we can get some proposals from some contractors and just award a contract immediately and get the repair going.
220?
120.
120. 120. We have $240,000 programmed in the budget this year for a bridge maintenance project. Unfortunately, the plan was not, did not include this bridge. So in order to take care of this project financially, we will have to either reduce the amount of bridge repairs that we were planning on doing with the previous project and eliminate some of the not-so-urgent projects or repairs until a later time. Our other option is, I have the 2015 resurfacing project ready to go out to bid now. This includes the Abbey Glen resurfacing, the miscellaneous Illinois 7 resurfacing, and the downtown resurfacing. All of those are projects in the capital improvement plan. I have consolidated these into one big project for the 2015 resurfacing project, and it will be ready to go out to bid, and we will be able to have the bid opening on February 11th. I am anticipating that we will award a project that is a little less than what we have budgeted. So if that's the case, and our project comes in under what we've budgeted, then we can take those additional funds and throw them at that bridge maintenance program to be able to add back in some of those projects that we were having to delay to do this project. So.
Amy, I just have a quick question.
Uh huh.
Are we making the repairs on the bridge because it's needed by the Army Corps of Engineers?
We are making the repairs on the bridge because that is our responsibility to make the repairs on the bridge.
But it's the Army Corps of Engineers because it's a lightly-traveled bridge. There, you need it more than we do. Why do we get them to pay for it?
We, we had a, it's our bridge, and we are responsible. We did meet with them and asked them if they were able to contribute anything. Obviously, with a federal project, they don't have the funding to increase anything in that manner. You know, there's other opportunities that we could potentially do with developers in the area that come in that we might be able to get some of this money back. And again, you know, we've consulted with financing and how to shift some of these other projects and dollars with engineering to be able to accomplish this, and then hopefully still do what we budgeted.
What do we get out of owning the bridge?
Other than having to take care of it, you know, it's...
There's a residence, there's a residence home there.
I just want to clarify, this is the...
We don't get anything out of this.
We don't get anything out of the bridge.
Yeah, this is not the high-level bridge. This is a lower-level bridge. It just goes over to the island.
It's the original Nine Street Bridge.
In a past city agreement with the state of Illinois, the city agreed to take this bridge over years ago. Ron had informed us, so it's our responsibility. We don't really have a way to screw it.
We have a new suitor in the area, though.
Potentially, yeah. We don't want to...
More than we do.
Potentially.
Well, the new suitor is, we took in the Army Corps?
Yeah.
They're fixing the powerhouse. Isn't that what that's all about?
They're fixing the powerhouse, and they're also redoing the river wall, which benefits everyone. I mean, that's a federal project, so...
It's kind of like this. Let's say it was a road in the middle of town. You know, just because somebody was doing construction, and the road's in a shambles, doesn't mean that we're not responsible to fix the road. It's one of these goofball pieces of land that we own. It's really an island. It's not even contiguous to anything. It's just like back in the day, when they made the High Bridge, we ended up getting stuck with this somehow. Again, my question for you is this, Amy. How often do bridges come up for inspection?
It depends on the bridge. If the bridge is new, like the brand-new Division Street Bridge that we just built, probably won't have to have an inspection for four or five years on that bridge, because it's a brand-new bridge.
When was the last time this one came up?
I believe it was inspected a year ago.
A year ago?
I mean, how did we go from like, is this the same inspector?
No, we have a new program, a bridge program manager.
Weren't these, the bridge, the pictures that you sent out?
Yes.
I mean...
You can see...
It's terrible.
There's steel that you actually can see light through, the rusted steel.
Little history about this bridge. This, this, this is what is left over from the original Nine Street Bridge, which used to be a swing bridge, that was replaced back in nineteen sixty-nine. So what we're seeing here is at least forty-five years of neglect of non-maintenance on this. And it's got to be probably closer to fifty. And, and these pictures are pretty amazing.
It's pretty much the iron supports.
I guess I don't get how like a year ago, who was the inspector a year ago?
Robinson Engineering was our bridge program manager a year ago.
All right. So you're saying when they looked at it, they gave it a thumbs up, but now it's a disaster? I mean, how does that work in a year?
It didn't necessarily get a thumbs up, but the condition of it was significantly deteriorated to a point, like, a year ago, when it was inspected, the, the condition of the bridge, the bridge inspection report said that there were minor things that needed to be fixed, and some things needed to be painted. This year, it's, the beams are in horrible condition, and we need to have a special feature inspection done to see if the load needs to, the load rating needs to be decreased.
Didn't happen in a year.
Yeah, it doesn't happen in a year.
All right. Well, I mean, look, stuff happens. I get it. It's a little annoying that it seems like it's been a lousy repair for a long time. I also understand it's one of these bridges that nobody in town uses it, you know? The only people that use it are the power plant, so it's not, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind. I mean, I get it. I just don't like the idea of pinching some of these other projects to fix this thing. What's the difference, then? We can't get the Army Corps to even point you up a little bit, if we're looking at some of this difference?
The way the federal, as you can imagine, the way the federal system works, they have a contract that's already approved, and any contingencies are built into their supplier. Well, this supplier is moving mass materials of land, not fixing bridges. These are iron supports under the bridge, that ultimately, it's a bridge we're responsible for. And the deterioration has made us lower the rating from twenty tons to eight tons. I understand, you know, Kelly's point, that it's not used that much, we leave it alone, but I, I don't prescribe to that thinking that if the bridge is in disrepair and we're responsible, we should unfortunately...
Collapse with a truck or anything, yeah.
The superstructure on this is probably going to have to be replaced someday in the future as well, not in the near future, but in the long future. There's certainly federal grants available that we could apply for, and we could ask other developers or other projects in the area to help fund it. But again, we did go, we did have a meeting with the Corps of Engineers Monday.
Let me ask a dumb question.
Sure.
We're expediting this because the Army Corps of Engineers needs it?
We would like to expedite our process. It would certainly help the Corps of Engineers. It would also help other developers in the region.
What would happen if, if the, if the city told the Army Corps of Engineers, "We don't have the money for the project"?
Well, the, the Army Corps, the thirty million dollar Army Corps project would be delayed, probably costing them a few more million dollars.
Oh, do we know that?
Because that's what they've told us.
We just met with them on Monday.
But the Army Corps of Engineer, I don't know if you remember, but a few years back, part of the canal wall collapsed.
Yes, I do remember that.
And, I mean, it was a serious problem. They are replacing part of the canal wall adjacent to this part that collapsed, so that we don't have another collapse.
Okay.
So, in my opinion, this is in, this repair to this canal wall is in our best interest, too, because there could be serious repercussions if we have another collapse.
Amy, if, if the work that we're going to do here in the emergency, on an emergency timeline, will that be good, will that be good money after good? When we eventually do go after the superstructure of this bridge, will the work that we do now lessen what we would have been doing, what we would have been investing when we do the superstructure later?
When, when we do finally completely, okay, what I've been told is that if we were going to do a more in-depth repair, we were going to be replacing the beams, we would have to build, do temporary shoring to allow that anyway. So yes, that temporary shoring that we're putting in place now will lessen the amount of work that we have to do when we replace the beams and, and do the permanent repair.
As long as they still have integrity, we don't, it depends on how soon we can get the grants.
Right, and that's why we are planning, because the, the bridge rating right now is at a point where we are eligible for federal funding for the replacement of the, of the deck and the, and the beams that are in bad condition. The plan is, before it gets inspected again with the new temporary shoring and stuff, is to go ahead and apply for those HBP funds and get that process going. Now, with this new development that's coming in, it's possible that we could sit down with that developer and say, "Hey, you know, this bridge is really going to be useful for you, not so much for us. If we apply for these funds to get these, get the bridge repaired, and, you know, so that it lasts another fifty years, would you be willing to put in the local share, the twenty percent match for that grant?" And, you know, my guess is that they would be more than willing to do that. It's much better than them having to pay for the repair themselves.
Amy, I'd like to get a copy of both bridge reports, the Robinson and the, and the latest one.
Uh-huh.
My, my father was a bridge engineer, so I know a little bit about it.
Okay.
And the, the thing about bridges, as he used to tell me, was that if the surface broke and water and salt started leaking, a bridge would deteriorate pretty quickly.
And that's exactly what has happened.
Because water gets trapped in those joints, and, and saltwater gets trapped, that's it, they're gone.
The, actually, the bridge was designed, and what I've been told by our bridge inspector, our current bridge inspector, is that the bridge was designed very poorly. There are joints in the bridge that allow water to drip down on top of the steel beams, and it causes them to deteriorate faster. There are much better ways to design a bridge deck where it transfers the water away from the beams and keeps that from happening.
The bridge in Minnesota, that had that problem.
Yes.
The one that collapsed. And that had been inspected, and then it collapsed, and because of that. And a lot of times, say, because the water and the saltwater is dripping down into areas that you can't see, that's, that also exacerbates the problem.
Right.
But I'd like to get a, a copy of both of those, if that's at all possible.
Sure. I sent the, I think the one, the last, the latest report, I sent to you today. I just have to go back and find the, the...
That'd be good.
Most recent one from Robinson.
You should go ahead and send it to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
I'm no bridge engineer, but it's clearly a problem. The pictures are terrible. So it's one of those things that none of us want to do, right? Nobody wants to spend money on it, but I think we probably have to. I am hesitant. I, I would love if, if the rest of your bids under CIP for 2015 come in under budget to where we can just fund this without any issue, but I am hesitant on any talk of delay of anything in the CIP, right? I think that document is, is great, and we want to execute as much as we can. So in the event that, you know, you go out to bid on other projects, they come in slightly favorable, but not this whole hundred and twenty thousand, I know we ended last year pretty favorable on fund balances. I know we've got, you know, pretty conservative fund amounts anyways. Can we reassess in two or three months whether we need to make a slight budget adjustment to fund whatever the delta is here, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars, to make sure that we're funding everything in the CIP? Because I'd hate to miss out on another project that we planned on doing, over thirty thousand bucks that we could easily fund if we would just pass the amendment.
Absolutely. We'll be watching the, the expenses as the bids come through.
And so, I mean, I don't know, Amy, how you operate on all of it, but, you know, speaking for myself, I would try to go forward with all 2015 projects, right?
And, and that's what...
I don't see any delay because of this, and we'll figure out the funding, since it is a, it's important, but it's a small amount that we can work with.
Right, and I, and I really think that it's not going to be an issue. I, I, my estimate for the resurfacing project is lower than what we budgeted, and generally speaking, we put a lot of things in the resurfacing project that we don't typically use, because we don't know what's going to happen when the resurfacing project happens. We generally put a lot of driveway removal and replacement in, because we don't know if the, like, if the contractor has to remove curb in front of somebody's driveway, we don't know, you know, he could, like, really rip up the driveway and make a big mess, or he could, like, saw cut it and pull it out real easy and not touch the driveway at all. So there are generally a lot of items in the resurfacing contract that we just don't use. Last year, the last resurfacing project that we did, like, maybe ten percent of the money that we had in the contract for driveway removal and replacement, we actually used. So, you know, there was quite a bit of money left over just for that. And so even if the project is let and bid out, and it comes in exactly what we had budgeted, I don't think we're going to spend all of that, so...
But I, I just want to hear that we're moving forward on all those CIP projects as well, so...
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. The bigger the law tracks, the worse it is. So we have to do an amendment. I think that's the way to go, but we'll see.
And, and this, and the resurfacing project that I have ready to go also includes resurfacing of the new, the parking lot behind the Community Development Center, the Big South Public Landing Parking Lot, which wasn't originally in the CIP. And it also includes the resurfacing of the police station parking lot, which wasn't in, originally in the CIP. And Ben, did the police department put funds in their budget for that resurfacing?
We did.
They did?
Yeah, they had seizure money.
So that will be on top of what we budgeted. So, I mean, that's even going to be that much more that we won't spend.
We'd like to try to keep contingencies built in.
All right, thanks, Pam.
One more question. Amy, in regards to the bridge, I also believe that the Lockport Powerhouse uses that bridge, too?
Yes.
So would they have any interest in...
No.
I'm sure, they would want to get that fixed, too. I'm sure they have deliveries on that road, too, maybe?
They do, and, and they were, they were concerned about it, but, you know, the eight-ton limit wasn't that big of a deal for them.
For them, okay.
They were like, you know, if, you know, if it takes a little while to get it fixed, big deal.
Yeah.
They weren't really that concerned about it.
I knew they'd get equipment and out, but they didn't know.
We had, we had members of MWRD at, at our meeting as well.
Okay.
We were trying to squeeze them all, Kelly, but...
Yeah.
And we did bring up to the Army Corps about, you know, well, we, we wouldn't have to really do this project immediately if it weren't for the fact that you have this project. Would you be willing to, you know, put some money towards the repairs? And the way the representatives from the Army Corps explained it to us was because, because this is a federal aid project, and, you know, we've done federal aid projects, we know how they go, because this is a federal aid project, if they had to build a new bridge for the project, and it was known upfront, then they would have been able to incorporate that into the project and build a new project, uh, build a new bridge, and it would have been, you know, eligible for funding under that project. But at the last minute, after the project's already bid, you know, for us to come back and say, "Can you just give us money for, to help out with these repairs?", there's no, there's no contingency for that. There's no way for them to, to fund that.
So if the old bridge report would have said that it needed it, we might have gotten it, is what I think I'm hearing, and now apparently it's...
Well, if the old bridge report would have said that, then they would have known there was a problem, and there, there could have been shoring built into the contract, yes.
And I'll just make one other comment. I'm always the one who does not want to waive multiple bids. I'm always pushing to go get multiple bids. I, I think that makes sense, and I appreciate the way that you kind of, you know, made it clear, "Hey, there's an urgent need here. We don't have time to go through the bidding process." So I also, I support waiving the bidding process.
And we will get multiple quotes. It's just that the advertising for thirty days and going through the whole process is what takes a lot of time. So we, we do have, the, the current bridge program manager sent us some names of some bridge contractors that we could send the contract out to, to get some proposals. So, you know, we're still going to get proposals and, and go with the, you know, the lowest bid, or, you know, the, the, close to the lowest bid if they can do it faster, you know? But as far as going through the whole process and advertising and all that stuff, it just takes so much time that...
Amy, one last question, and that's it, and this is it. The Army Corps has bridge engineers and bridge inspectors. They didn't look at the bridge?
Apparently not.
So they, I mean... They would have seen it as our responsibility, right? The roads... Yeah, but still, it's, it would be in the, in the way of their project. Also, FA, federal appropriations can be changed.
I, yeah, I know that federal appropriations can be changed, but what we've been told is that for something like this, they, there's no way for them to fund it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, it is what it is. I mean, they didn't look at every road all the way from their shop to here, just, so, I mean, we good with consent agenda? Do we need to put this on and actually...
Consent.
Consent, okay? All right. Thanks, Amy. All right, any new business?
I, I do have, it's not really business, but something that I'd like to bring up. Darren's probably heard this, I don't know who else has, but I get complaints here and there from Victoria Crossing on their dry retention area. I'm a little unclear on exactly what the city's responsibility is. I've heard from a couple of different people on what their thoughts are, but I think at some point, Joe, I think your group kind of helps with the contract for landscape out there. I get some complaints on that. There's a couple of different things, and, and I don't know, I mean, obviously, you're, I'm sure, totally unaware of this at this point, but I, I think the city does have some liability to make sure that it's being kept up to some extent. At some point in the near future, I think maybe all of us have a quick half hour to kind of talk about what the city should be doing, whether we are doing it. I mean, you know, a couple complaints about the landscapers not cutting grass enough probably isn't the end of the world, things on, like, a lot of, you know, standing water where there shouldn't be might be a little bit of a bigger issue. I don't know what the solution is. Hopefully, you know, I'm not proposing some big expensive solution, but I think, I know residents call, I think they called Joe, I know they've called me, I'm assuming they've called Darren, I'm assuming they've called Mary. I'd just like to kind of get together what we think is the best course of action there. I don't even have a recommendation, because I don't know all of the...
Yeah, that's all right. You know, I, I know that there's history to this. I haven't gotten any calls from it, but I know there's history to those retain, those dry ponds. So why don't, why don't you just schedule some time to, to come in, and we'll figure out the solution.
Have you contacted Tom Fulton, the code officer?
I have not, no.
Because he'll go out and, and look, and if there's...
There's a separate code issue out there that I...
Well, if it has to do with grass cutting and, and things like that...
City responsible for grass cutting.
Yeah, it's in the retention.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
That's one of the areas that we do contract up very... We've been out there numerous times, like Jason's talking about.
Oh, okay.
I think if we all sit down for a half hour, we can hash it out and make everybody understand. Yeah, thank you for your time.
You know, while we're on the topic, Whispering Pine still has that issue over, I think it's Park District property.
Yep.
There, a couple of the residents called me and said they're still, before the weather turned, they were still having issues there, and I think there needs to be more significant work there done dredging.
That is the Park District that handles that, and I have worked with Jeff Lotion from the Park District to get him out, and I will call him again and get him out there.
Thank you.
That area is the Park District.
Yeah, that's what I, I remember that. Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, since we're on the, on the subject, a few weeks ago, I got approached by a resident in Walmart.
in Walmart. Long story short, they happened being the first ward. I apologize not letting the two of you know, but Ron Keneva's aware of it, and I don't know if he had an opportunity to discuss it. I'll tell you after the meeting, but it's in reference to a pond off of St. Charles, which is in the first ward. So, yeah, these issues come up a lot when it comes to ponds. And Army Corps of Engineers, they get involved. They got to protect the grasses and what have you. And they have to be landscaped in a certain way. Just a little bit of perspective, for those of you who travel Division Street a lot, if you look at Karen Springs, Karen Springs had different phases when they were building out. One phase, you see the tall grass, and then another phase, it's well manicured. Well, the rules from the Army Corps of Engineers changed, so that's why you see right next to each other, tall grasses, and right next to it, when the laws, you know, rules change, it's well manicured. So it's really interesting how these things come up.
Do a great job of taking on that water. So that's, I think, what changed their philosophy.
Absolutely, yeah. But anyway, enough of that. And then one final comment, I like to say in light of a lot of comments in reference to police work across the nation, I like to publicly thank our police department on a great job they've always done protecting the city of Lockport and all of our citizens. So thank you, Chief, and thank Dave and the rest of your officers and lieutenants and sergeants, and a lot of the hard work that you do to protect the city. Thank you.
Bob, thanks for that. And there's also, residents can look up, I think in the city of Chicago, there's an initiative to mark trees and put up blue lights in support of law enforcement officers. So that might be something our residents might look up and see what, exactly what kind of protocol they're following to signify their support for law enforcement.
Yeah, and you know, I'll jump on that bandwagon. You know, went out with Terry and a whole bunch of citizens when Lockport Love went out there and, you know, helped those families. And, you know, I can't say enough, Terry, about what you've been doing. You know, I'd asked you to make a community-oriented police department, and get to the point where every citizen knows a police officer's name. And you've done wonderful work helping with that mission. So thank you for that. And one other thing too, I've got, just a reminder, I do have a town hall meeting this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. We'll do it right here. And then I'll do another one on July, or January 29th at 7:00 p.m. in the evening. So Saturday morning and Thursday evening. So it's either this Saturday, if you want to make it Saturday morning, or January 29th in the evening up here both. So opportunity to just shoot the breeze. There's so many things going on, it's just never, this isn't always the right venue to do it. So I'm happy to share with things, and you can ask questions and beat me up and everything else you need to do. So that's what town halls are for. So that's this Saturday. There's nothing else? Do a, have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counsel?
Second.
Alderman Turner, second of Alderman Vandermeer, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Does anyone take five?
Yeah.
Let's, I mean, really take five. Let's be back at 8:25. We're going to start again.
Come on, no waiting.
Very quiet. All right.
So, hey Ben, if Bowling Brook is going to West Town, the fixed costs are being split more. Are we getting a discount?
That was a controversial vote.
Anybody will start, City Council?
I know that for sure. Yeah, because I see our fire over there.
Alex, can I have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Still here. All right. We have things. Before we get to consent agenda, I do want to move up a couple items earlier in the evening. I want to bring up Broken Arrow, and we'll also bring up 163rd Street, because we have a speaker for that too. So as soon as we're done with consent agenda, we'll let the folks who want to talk about Broken Arrow speak. And then we'll get going on from there. So just to kick it off though, let's, can I have a motion to do consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Alderman Turner, second of Alderman Deskin, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we have a, the regular City Council meeting minutes from December 17th, the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes from December 17th. We have our payroll ending December 21st, and approval of bills. Any questions? All right, can I have a motion to pass?
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Turner, second of Alderman Mary Nowsky, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Well, why don't we, why don't we just go ahead and jump right into Broken Arrow? Couple things. I do have, Michelle, are you going to speak on behalf of everybody again? Otherwise, we, okay. I'm sorry about the video. I know you wanted to show this video. We couldn't show anything tonight. I don't know what the deal is. You're welcome to, I mean, I'll get it posted so we can all look at it on council.
Can Kathy do the same thing with the PowerPoint, with their video that she's doing with the PowerPoint?
Yeah, I don't know. Kathy's our way to get that up on the TV as well, the video.
Yeah, it'll take me a couple more minutes to start with restarting that computer.
Okay.
I killed the other program that I've got to restart.
Well, I just got to.
It'll take me a couple minutes.
All right.
If you want to talk about something else, call or do it.
Well, we can, yeah, I mean, I guess we could do that.
I'm going to ask a question. Why, if we're voting on it tonight, what difference will it make?
If what? You see the?
If we don't postpone the bill.
Yes, Michelle asked if she could share it.
Yeah, and there's going to be future discussions on this. So I think it's good to make whatever their concerns are part of the public record through this.
Yeah, and I think that that's something we all have to grab a hold of here. This is not an approval of anything. This is an okay, a thumbs up to Broken Arrow to say, look, if you can, if you think you can find ways to make this work, let's see it. Let's see what you got. There's a whole bunch of concerns that we all have, and we all agree upon, whether it's egress, whether it's safety, whether it's density. I want to understand what type of homes these are, what the price point is. I want to know that there's a builder in line before we say okay to this. I want to know who that builder is. I mean, we also understand even when it comes to the flooding. I understand the concerns about like how Broken Arrow treated folks in the past, and there's a lack of trust. I get all that stuff. This is not stuff that's beyond us, or that we're ignorant to, or we're trying to ram through this on anybody. I understand all those concerns, and I believe all the council does as well. But they are property owner, and they have a right to come forward with a preliminary plan. It's, they're right to do so.
This is consent.
I don't mean. They're not done. And so this is why we want to make sure that we give opportunities to do such things.
We have to have a motion and then discussion.
It's fine.
So we have to have a motion to, we should read the motion, then have, then have discussion on the motion.
We're supposed to have an agenda participation.
Yeah, have it up here.
We're waiting so that she play the video. That's, I think that's why we.
And he's asked if she could talk about something else. Why don't we just do it? We'll have a motion to speak about Broken Arrow. What do we do? Oh, motion to pass?
Right. And then we have discussion on the motion.
I made a motion. Does anybody want to?
What I'm saying is, agenda participation usually comes.
Prior to.
Before, to even the consent agenda where any people that want to speak.
They want to speak, but there's a video that accompanies their talking.
I know all about it.
I have no problem allowing people to talk when we're talking about the agenda. That's just the way I've run the meetings up till now. I don't have a problem doing it and continuing doing it the way I do it. So if she's gonna, we can all sit here and wait for Kathy then.
We could pass a couple of easy.
Yeah, we could do that.
Like the executive session minutes.
Of course, that's the one you want.
All right.
I'll make the motion to pass the executive session minutes.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, who's second? I missed that.
You're me or Darren's pick.
Chris.
I can squeeze in a quick one too, for playing that game. All right, laid on me. What do you got? I've got, on the agenda tonight, we have CA1, a motion, seeking a motion to pass the ordinance amending the chapter on planning, commission, compensation. This is the discussion we had.
So moved. Second.
Last meeting to increase planning. That was Turner and Deskin. Don't rush too hard. Kathy's working over there. Now you're putting her under the gun. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And I can do the Dairy Queen.
All right, laid on me.
Which is taking us right through. As you mean, you may recall, back on August 6th of 2014, the City Council authorized a facade grant for the Dairy Queen in the amount of $10,000. This was for the owner to complete facade improvements as well as upgrades to the ground sign, which included lowering the height and adding a brick base. The improvements have been completed and were authorized for the grant. The property owner has submitted the appropriate evidence indicating that all the contractors have been paid. In the spring, the payment will come back to do some touches on the property. Also, at that same time, they will paint the brick that's on the monument sign, because one of our code requirements is that the sign matches the building. So however, when that project came in, the brick around the building and the brick around the sign, it did match. And then the brick got painted on the building, and so that's why we have to paint the brick now. But in either case, she has to actually give the council to authorize the reimbursement of $10,000 to the owner Christina Burke Dowers for the completion of the improvements to the property.
So moved.
Second. By Alderman Turner, second of Alderman Ferretta. Have a roll call, please?
I have a question, please. You're okay with that, Pam, even though it's not complete? Okay. See, I think it's pretty much customary to make sure everything is done before we do payout.
Well, and it is. And this was a situation where, when they submitted the plans for the sign, it is in compliance with the plans that were submitted.
Okay.
But what happened was the brick got painted on the building, and therefore then we needed to make sure the brick gets painted on there. So it does comply. It's just there was some kind of something that occurred from the time of the construction and completion of the building.
Do we have some sort of recourse if they ever didn't comply?
She will. She will comply.
I'll just pull up to the Dairy Queen window and say, what's up? Save this brick.
Or we can just go out there and.
Yeah.
As long as you feel comfortable. I just want to make sure, because, I mean, okay.
Have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 I'd like Amy to come up one more for another item too, if we can, while we're still waiting. Yeah.
I'll move the microphone over here so I don't have to bother Kathy. Last Committee of the Whole meeting, we talked about the contract for the consulting engineering for the Illinois 7-171 water main replacement project. We got a proposal from Strand Associates for $85,000 for the development of the plans to be incorporated into the state's project. And my recommendation is to award the contract for engineering for the Illinois 7-171 water main replacement project to Strand Engineering for $85,000.
So moved. Second.
Alderman Turner, second of Alderman Vandermeer. Any questions? Roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Turner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Calerelli?
Yes.
Yes. Is that everything except for 163rd Street?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, Broken Arrow folks. I was trying to make you avoid all that stuff. But, well, if we're still working, why don't we just go to 163rd Street then?
Do you want to just take that with you?
All right, that's fine. All right. Well, then, if you guys, if you want to come up, Michelle, and we'll do a motion here. Well, you know what, just for the sake of making everybody happy, we'll just do it under agenda participation. So you want to speak about Broken Arrow, please, Michelle?
Yes. Hello. I know, I feel like I'm part of City Council, because I've been here for the past like four months. So we do appreciate the stuff you guys are doing. Love the stuff with the shop at Lockport. I think that's a great idea. I'm kind of excited. We were saying that you guys should make up some bags, you know, that people use those green bags, shop at Lockport. But very exciting.
I love this.
Right, I'm sure. We just wanted to address you one more time before you vote. We understand, first of all, remember that this is not me speaking. I'm speaking on behalf of people. I'm speaking on behalf of the 220 people who signed the petition, saying that they do not want any more building put into our neighborhood because of some safety issues and some other issues. One of the big things was, Mayor, what you said last month, and I'm just quoting you from the newspaper, like to say no at this point is inappropriate, and we need to allow the owners to see what they can do to keep their business afloat. And that was from the Herald News from December 18th. We understand that these issues are part for, a requirement for you guys to approve a concept plan. But maybe they need to be. Maybe this needs to be looked at differently. Why would we, why should the business come before our safety in our neighborhood? I guess that's where the people of Arrowhead are confused why we would allow anybody when your own city planner is saying there's an issue. This today's standards wouldn't allow one egress. The fact that we have Orland Park, New Lennox, and Joliet, and I'm excited that now we have the city attorney that's from Joliet, who'll be able to help you, because he was actually mentioned from Jim Trezna, the Public Works Director, mentioned him as a great resource for you guys to be able to use, that because Joliet wouldn't allow this size development to happen with the one egress. The safety concern needs to be the city's biggest priority here. Why would we want him to even put money into something if we, if it's not safe? What would a traffic study show you? I guess that's what we're concerned with, is that if your own city planner, other cities are saying this, why would we want to do this? Mr. Chen said himself that he's not willing to tear up his golf course. So why would we allow a concept plan? There's nothing here that can happen because there are so many residents. It is a safety concern. You want to do a traffic study? Maybe we should do it tomorrow because it's not golf season. I mean, how are we going to know how many people are going to be there? If something happens in this area, it's a safety concern, and the safety concern comes back to you as the City Council, nobody else. You have to be the one to say no, that this is an issue. I'm sorry that his business isn't doing well. That is not a concern for us. The concern is the safety, and that needs to be your concern too. Plus the 220 people who signed the petition in opposition of this. You are, they're the people that hired or voted for you to be here. These are the people that are against this. We understand that this isn't part of the concept plan, that it's really part of the preliminary plan. But why would you allow a businessman to put money into something that isn't even, that couldn't even happen? Maybe the question to be, would you be willing to put in another road? Would you be willing to do this? Don't even look at anything else. If he says no, like he has said in the past, there is no concept plan to go forward.
Michelle, do you have the petition? Can you read it aloud?
I do. We, the undersigned, as residents of Lockport, Illinois, do hereby protest against any development in changing the par three of Broken Arrow Golf Course to a banquet facility, cultural center, and proposed residential area containing 52 dwelling units as proposed under Broken Arrow Concept Plan. On the video that we'll be leaving here with you is dealing with the drainage issue, which I understand is kind of a side issue. The biggest issue that we have is a safety issue. But talking about the good faith idea that the Chens did ignore the fact that the drainage was occurring. This is actually the video that was presented to City Council back in August of 2006 by Heather Cook. She lives on 16556 Apache. She is not here today, but you could look back in minutes to see that she was the one who presented this video. Her husband's very ill, so she has not been able to do this. One of the things that was brought up is that Broken Arrow has agreed that they aggravated the drainage problem when it occurred, and said that they handled it immediately. Remember that the drainage problem started in 2000, when the driving range was switched to a par three, and it was 2006 when it was finally fixed. But who fixed it? City of Lockport fixed it. And they paid some amount of it. But it was the City of Lockport that started that entire process going. We just hope that you are really looking at the safety. Maybe it's the issue of tabling this right now, going back and figuring out why there's, we can't go back and say there was one entrance put in so we can just keep going forward. There is an entrance problem there. There's a density problem. Do you want to be the ones responsible for the first person that can't get into that neighborhood, and now you've added more density to that problem? So the safety concern is legitimate and should override any and all concept plans to this area if there is not another egress added. And I hope that you all take it seriously. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. All right. Well, seeing as we're doing agenda participation, Glenn, you want to talk about 163rd Street?
How you doing? Glenn Martin. I live at 15824 Chancellor Drive, Lockport. I'm talking about the property at 163rd and Gauger Road, specifically the southeast corner, where they're wanting to change the zoning is already for warehousing. They want to eliminate two small buildings, which would be facing 163rd, and make it one large building with more truck docks. A little history on this parcel, Housa Levine, which Lockport hired to do a land use study a few years ago. When they did this, first did this study, they said that this, the best use would be office and businesses in a campus-like setting due to its proximity to residential, single-family homes, which is at 163rd and Gauger Road. Also, this area was served by a two-lane road, Gauger Road, and it's not intended for heavy truck use. The land was sold, and the new owner's petition for a ch- The land was sold, and the new owners petitioned for a change in zoning to allow these warehouses. They, we were against it, we didn't want the warehouses with the truck traffic being so close to a residential area, being served by a two-lane Gauger Road. They approved to have five large warehouse buildings, two smaller buildings facing one hundred and sixty-third. Now, another owner wants to come by and change the two small buildings to one large building, increase the size of the buildings, increase the number of truck traffic and truck docks there. Nearby residents, myself and my neighbors, were asking, "What happened to the office and warehouse? We realize the zoning was changed, that that horse has left the corral." But what we're asking is, just because a developer, two years later, says, "Well, market research says that, you know, one big building will be better than two smaller buildings, more truck docks will be better," how about us? We've been here for twenty-two years there, why should we have to have more truck docks, bigger buildings? We fought hard two years ago to have the smaller buildings in front, make it a little bit more accessible, but now, all of a sudden, you know, they have a developer that wants to come in and be one big building? It's going to be a couple of years before that big building gets done. You know, if you believe that they got a guy sitting there, you know, "I just smoked my last cigarette," and checks in the mail. I mean, everybody says they got somebody, but until they can put forth and say, "This is the person that's coming," then, once they put in this warehouse, and now I hear that there's possibly going to be another warehouse, three more buildings put in next to the Pan Do-It, how many trucks can go up and down Gauger Road? It's only rated for seven tons, fourteen thousand pounds. I know you guys are going to say, "Oh, we're going to improve the road," or "The developer's going to improve the road," but it's still going to be a two-lane road. Are you making it a four-lane road? You're not going to do that. It's going to be a two-lane road, the truck traffic going to, going to Broken Arrow, Karen Springs already is a lot. So, I'm asking you guys, two years ago, they said two smaller buildings, leave it at two smaller buildings. I would love to have something like the gentleman came by here earlier, apartments, retail stores, you know, generate some sales tax. It's probably not going to happen. Once you put in these warehouses, it's a done deal. We have the warehouse at one hundred and forty-third, they're still there. Also, the truck, I don't like going on three-fifty-five myself, paying the big tolls. The tolls just got increased for truck traffic January first, I think it's like ten bucks for, to run through the tolls now. We're having two more increases. Are we going to build this, build this building, and then all of a sudden have it just sit there? With the Pan Do-It, are we going to have a new traffic study on one hundred and sixty-third with the increased truck traffic? Or if you approve, let them put in a bigger warehouse? Obviously, more traffic, are we, the trucks, the traffic study has been two years old, are we going to have another traffic study with that also? And then the lady brought up a big point about egress. Again, I know you guys already approved this, but this warehouse at one hundred and sixty-third and Gauger only has one entrance. If it's not good enough for them, or not good enough to put in a subdivision with two entrances, but right away you're going to put in a bigger building, more trucks, more warehouse, and still only have one entrance off one hundred and sixty-third? I think the city council can do better, I think Lockport can do better. I think you guys really need to say, "Is this what we want? Do we really want these more warehouses on one hundred and sixty-third, next to the Pan Do-It, on one hundred and sixty-third and Gauger, when we have them already at one hundred and forty-third and three-fifty-five?" Please think about it. If nothing else, stick to your guns. You guys approved two smaller buildings facing our homes, I wish you guys would, if they want to build it like that, so be it, but another building with bigger building, hopefully not. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Glenn. All right. So we've got all our other motions done, why don't we do a motion to, to it? Motion for Broken Arrow Golf Course, Concept Plan.
So moved.
Alderman Deskin, seconded by, anyone?
Second.
Oh, Calorelli? All right. Bob?
I think the email that Carrie sent out to the city council earlier today encapsulates, you know, pretty much the historical perspective and some of the main issues that Michelle just brought up tonight. In a residential area like that, having that one entrance, Broken Arrow Drive, and adding more density and additional traffic, it is a safety issue, and everything seems to be pointing back to that particular item. And back on the public hearing on October twentieth, that Broken Arrow, I even brought up, at that particular entrance on Feral Road and Broken Arrow Drive, we had an incident election day back in November two thousand and twelve. Me and my wife were getting all kinds of calls from the election judges and just from residents, they couldn't get out, and residents couldn't get in, because Feral Road was being resurfaced at that particular time. And no one could vote during that timeframe, and if Amy Wagner was here, she remembers that, because I was on the phone with her. Long story short, it started to rain fairly heavily, so they had to stop construction, and then hence, that particular Broken Arrow Drive entrance, for people who had to vote from the outside going in, was eventually opened up. So, I mean, I have an example that I experienced, you know, just by listening to the residents, and even in Thunder Hill off of Gauger Road, we also have just one entrance and one exit going into Gauger Road, some years ago, and I can't remember what the situation was, but going south on Gauger Road, I didn't even have access to my own subdivision, the police department, they had to redirect us, because there must have been an accident or something, this is going back probably eight, nine years, maybe ten years, when I first moved into Lockport about twelve years ago. But anyway, that was just another example where I've personally experienced, you know, these issues that the residents are bringing up, having just that one entrance and one exit coming out of a subdivision. And we could talk about other stuff, you know, pressures to the schools and things like that, and what happened in the past, but everything seems to be pointing back to that. And over the years, Michael, and me, and Catherine, we've gotten to know you over the years, and we'll do whatever we can, if we're on a committee or on a board, to bring a golf outing to your business, and we always try our best to promote Broken Arrow Golf Course, to bring people golfing over there, but I just come back to that safety issue that the residents are bringing up. So, that's pretty much my summary, I just wanted to say.
Denise?
At the last meeting, it was suggested that we have some sort of duty or obligation to help keep a business profitable. I have no knowledge that the Broken Arrow Golf Course is in financial difficulty. The economy is improving, one of its competitors is no longer in business, and I personally saw golfers on that golf course on December twenty-sixth. Also, it is neither our fault nor our responsibility to keep or make a business profitable. Remember, it was Mr. Chen's decision to change the practice range into what seems to be a poorly designed and unkept course. A decision, by the way, as the video will show, I'm sure, that caused problems for years for the residents. A few months ago, this council refused to accommodate the developer of Corwin Plaza, who claimed to be in financial hardship. It was the mayor's stated position that it is not our responsibility to make a business profitable. So it would seem that the success or failure of this golf course is not our concern. Now, if rooftops are the incentive needed to attract business, Lockport has Oak Creek Building Homes, Lago Vista has over four hundred homes to be built, Cedar Ridge looks to have space for future housing, why approve housing where none was planned? I would also like to point out that the original plans for this development called for a hotel, a conference center, and a clubhouse. Only the clubhouse was built. So, it may be a crapshoot whether or not this banquet culture center is ever built. I ask everyone on this council to please put yourself and your family in the homes of the people of the Arrowhead subdivision. You paid a premium for a lot to back up on a golf course, now someone wants to take that away. The entire community of four hundred and forty homes has one point of egress and the same point for egress. Imagine if your child or your wife had an emergency, and some accident was blocking Broken Arrow Drive. It would be similar to being stuck on a stretch of highway for miles that has no exit. This is the nightmare these residents live with. How can we justify increasing the density of this subdivision? Most of us, at least, have one other way to get to a main access road. Darren must have ten different ways in his community. Please, please, do not support adding housing to this development. The original annexation agreement has a stated limit of ten percent density increase. This appears to show that the city council at that time realized that this development was pretty dense and should not accommodate more housing. Except that the annexation agreement has expired, nothing has changed as far as the density in this development. Two hundred and twenty residents of this community have signed a petition requesting that this body not approve this concept plan. No amount of additional housing and additional traffic is acceptable with only one way in and out. There was a scenario mentioned, that if we did not allow this concept plan to go forward, the entire golf course might fail, and all the land would be sold for a housing development. I think it's ludicrous that fifty-two homes will save the day, however, if it should happen, at least the residents can be assured of many more egress and egress points. So, on behalf of the residents of Arrowhead, please listen to the residents, who know all the problems they already have, they have a better perspective of the pitfalls of this plan. These are our residents, our neighbors, our constituents, who are asking that their community remain the community they bought into. Please, don't give them lip service. An approval of a concept plan almost always leads to the plan approval. Give them peace of mind, vote no on this concept plan, please.
Jason, what do you got?
So, I was unable to be at the last meeting, had some work and family stuff going on, but I've obviously met all the minutes, talked to Ben about this, Ben got emails that I think were actually pretty pertinent emails on the topic. And I don't take the residents' concerns lightly at all, and, to be totally frank, Mr. Chen, I think that, you know, ultimately, if this is going to be built, the burden is on you to make sure that you're going to be a good neighbor, because I don't know that that's happened in the past. I also think that the egress/egress issue is really an unfortunate issue, as Bob said, there's a couple designed around the park or on the golf course that is that way, and I'm interested to see what the ultimate traffic study would show for an area like this. That being said, I don't know that, you know, that that's, that there's much going to be done about that. From my understanding is, this is a, you know, Mr. Chen's not willing to add egress or egress, so, like I said, I'll be interested to see what a traffic study says on the area. I've heard people say, you know, "We can let this proceed, we can pass this, we can turn it down," you know, whatever, and I think they're all, I can understand people going with any side of this right now. I'm at the point where I think I'm not going to prohibit it at this point. I will, I'll give support, however, you know, I think there are a lot of variances that need to be cleaned up. I think there's a lot of neighborly goodwill that's not there, it's on the petitioner to try to build some of that. Saying that I'm not going to say no right now does not mean I'll pass a final plan, especially under, you know, the situation that we're at now. It will take some expense and some work for the current landowner to prove that this project is worth going forward as a whole, and I don't think that happens right now. If you choose to take on that expense and think that you'll get there in the long run, I think I read that you plan to submit with only one variance, which would be the length of the cul-de-sac, because that's unavoidable. I think ultimately, that's a much better presentation than what originally went in front of the planning council. So, I'm not going to hold this up today, but by no means is this a rubber stamp for a final approval in my mind at this point, and frankly, I think there's a little ways to go here. And, you know, I don't know how everybody else is going to vote, but I will, my vote will be to all, you know, vocally support it right now, but I think there's some work. And to be clear, the burden, I think, is on you, Mr. Chen, in the development, to prove that it can fit within the neighborhood without disrupting, especially some of this drainage stuff, I think that's crazy, you know, a second round of that is not acceptable in my mind, so. Those are my thoughts for now.
I believe we all received the, an email today from one of the residents, and I responded to the resident, and I also responded forward that, my response to Michelle. So I just thought I'd read it for the record. "I want to thank you for this email concerning the proposed development. I agree with your statement, I am aware that this plan is in its infancy. I agree with your assertion that we were elected to make informed and wise decisions. I believe that to make an informed and wise decision in this or any proposed development, that is the responsibility of every elected official, to read our municipal code, development code, and the planned urban development application form, and these documents are found at the city's website. It's vital every developer, resident, staff person, elected official, understand the process. Every time that proposed development is presented to the city, I go back and read these aforementioned documents. Why? Because I want to understand my responsibilities for any development. Every time a proposed development is presented, I check the city documents to remind myself what the terms concept plan, preliminary plan, and final plan mean. For me, it's important to understand what is required of a developer, staff, planning commission, and the city council during each of these phases, and it's also important for me to understand what is, what is to be included through the various phases. I too seek answer to all the concerns that you and others have raised concerning safety, engineering, drainage, and et cetera. However, the answers to these questions aren't part of and aren't required for a concept plan. Therefore, I can't in good faith impose the requirements of a preliminary plan on this or any other concept plan. I have also attended every meeting on the specific subject, this includes a planning commission meeting. During that meeting, the planning commission approved the concept plan, however, they didn't approve the concept plan as presented. They approved the concept plan with specific requirements that would be included in a preliminary plan. Almost all the concerns of the residents were included within the specific requirements. I agreed with the recommendations of planning commission then, and I agree with those same recommendations today. I am absolutely certain that in order to meet the requirements of the planning commission in a preliminary plan, that this development, this developer is going to incur significant expense. It is my opinion that not, that it is not the responsibility of the planning commission or the city council to make the decision whether or not this or any other developer incurs any expense. The decision to incur such expense regarding engineering, architecture, or anything else is totally up to the developer, and please remember, this or any other developer may very well incur expense and still have their preliminary plan rejected. I know this is true, because during the past two years, four proposed developments have been rejected by the council, and please understand that every one of these proposed developments was rejected in the preliminary, preliminary plan phase. There have also been many other developments that were never made it out of staff level, and thus, never made it to the planning commission and city council. Now, should this developer choose to go forward, I will require that the preliminary plan, as outlined in our municipal code, development code, and planned urban development application, address all the concerns raised by you and other residents. If a preliminary plan is presented, then it will be gone over with a fine-tooth comb by the residents, city staff, planning commission, and the council. And if the preliminary plan meets all the requirements as outlined in the municipal code, development code, and the planned urban development application process, then it will probably get the approval to go ahead with the final plan. However, if the preliminary plan doesn't meet the requirements as outlined in the various codes and recommendations made by the planning commission, then the final plan won't be approved by the planning commission, and it won't be approved by the city council. So, saying that, I'm going to vote to approve the concept plan, but Mr. Chen and his developer, and they're going to have to come with something that is going to have to meet all the requirements that we, that everybody's been talking about up here tonight, and if they can't, it's not going to fly.
Kelly, what do you got?
Yeah. I've talked at length with the people from this subdivision. I know the area, I know the area when it was being built. This was originally perceived that it was a unique golf course community, that had a golf course, and the selling point of it was that you did go through a residential area, and it was more like sold as kind of a country club atmosphere. And... And the problem that we have now is, is that we have a, the developer of this, the one family, that has come before us, and they've come before the city council before to increase housing density in the Broken Arrow area. But the, what we have is a, they're coming before us, and they want to improve their land, and God bless them. But there is one issue. Because of the unique way that this was designed, it was never designed to handle this kind of load. It was never designed to handle excess people. Now, it's not only road construction, but if a tornado hit, if several other disasters hit, that road would be clogged instantly. And once it got clogged by the residents, it will not be, fire departments can't get in, police are going to have a hard time getting in. So, that is a bona fide safety issue that I don't think has been addressed here. Now, let me touch on the whole deal of a concept plan. Now, I've been doing this in and out of Lockport government since 1995. And in all of those plans, in the early days, we were told that concept plans are, oh, this is just, we're mulling this around plan. No, if the city council approves a concept plan without an egress road, they can go to court and say, "Look, you approved it without a road," and we could lose. And the problem with that is, is that now, we've got a thing where, I don't care, you know, how smart people are, it's very simple. This is not rocket science. You need a way to get out of this subdivision if you're going to increase the density. The other issue, another issue on this, is that a lot of times, developers will come before the city council and get approval on something with the intent to sell the property, because the value of the property goes up once the zoning changes. That's common. And I don't know if that's the case here. I don't know what the condition of the Chen family is. I mean, I'm in business. I've had, I've had business troubles. In 1995, I went bankrupt. Took me time to come back from that. It came out in the last election, so it's not really a secret. So, the, and it took a while to come back to it. Now, I've got lines of credit. My business is doing great, and I have a personal credit rating that's in the eight hundreds. So, the deal is, is that we have to look at this not just to benefit one family. And again, because of the way that this boutique design was done, it's not like we're putting these developments right on 159th Street. To find these, you have to go through a subdivision to get to them. It's not a major road. It's, you know, a minor road. We have 440 homes that are in that subdivision. Now, if you even take 2.5 people per home, that's about 1,000 people. So, you have 1,000 people that are being affected for this subdivision. It's not something where it's on one side of you. It's all of them. It's right in the middle of it. So, when you have 1,000 people affected by this thing, and we approve a concept plan with only one road in, we're going to have a hard time pulling that back later. Now, unless you want to put in a Skyway or something like that, which is not feasible, then that's going to be almost impossible. And I've seen a lot of developments come through in this city. When I first was elected in this town, the population was 11,000. It's now over 25. So, my point is that this development, if we're going to do a concept plan, it's got to be a concept with an access and an egress. And now, to put an egress through a golf course, this is not uncommon. We have Cog Hill Golf Course that had the Western Open for 16 years. Western Open was played on the Dubstred part of that golf course. Dubstred is cut in half by a road. All the pros had to cross the road. All plays stopped, they crossed the road. It's not unprecedented. So, with a situation like that, I don't see that that's really a problem. I think that if they build a road, you're on a much closer path of getting this done. And if we let it go without a road in the concept plan, we lose later on, and so do the residents. So, then we'll have one family's needs versus the needs of 440 families. This is not like developing something in the downtown. This is not like developing something out by Target Home Depot. It's none of that. It's a boutique development that happened in the middle of the development. I think that for us to say and push and kick it down the road saying, "Well, we'll make sure it happens later on," it never does. As much as everybody, and as much as politicians before me have said it, it never does. The concept means that we have a concept of how this is going to look. You approve the concept. Good luck in court. And it's up to them. So, if we put it in in the beginning, it makes life a lot easier, and it's a lot safer for the residents, and we're adding, then we're adding some nice development to the city. But a development inside of a subdivision is a lot different from adding it anywhere else. And I don't have anything against the Chen family. I don't really know who they are. I don't, I don't know them personally. I met Mike Chen a couple of times. But I think that that's what we have to look for, because I'm elected of, by, and for the people. I'm not elected of, by, or for one business. I'm not elected of, by, or for anybody else but people. And the people here in this situation are going to be seriously, their lives are going to be disrupted if this passes. And if we're passing this just so that the property can be sold, that would be the biggest insult. Because now they go out and they say, "Wow, it's on the market. Guess what? The price just went up because we got approval by the city council." I don't know if that's the case. I'm not even alleging that that's the case. So, thank you, Mayor.
Tom, are concept plans binding?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, usually a concept plan is controlled by your document that creates the process. And as long as the record shows that the document itself, it's not a final decision, you still have the discretion, when this comes back to you, to make a final decision. I did hear Alderman Turner's comment, and I do understand, you know, sometimes, a concept approval leads to a final approval in court. But I think Councilman Duskin, I'm sorry, Alderman Duskin and Alderman Vandermeer made it clear that there, if they're voting yes on it this evening, it's strictly conditioned upon further evidence of compliance with the things that were required by the planning commission. So, is your current record right now something that will bind you later on, should this go to court? I don't think it is at this point, because I do believe the Aldermen who've spoken, who've indicated they may be voting yes, have indicated, but their yes vote would be conditioned on many things happening in the future.
But you do concur, though, that there are, when the concept plan is passed, it in court, it is held.
It's not always upheld.
But it does.
It certainly is a piece of evidence that a judge will consider, but there's also other factors that'll go into it. And certainly, a traffic study would probably be something that would be very important to see what kind of additional load is being put on the single way into the subdivision and then out. So, those are all factors. I can't tell you that this is a guaranteed loss in court, should you vote yes on the concept plan, no later on, and then get taken to court.
If I can just kind of follow up with what the council said. In the resolution that was prepared by staff, there are two sections in particular that need to be noted. Section one, basically outlining that the approval is conditioned upon the applicant addressing certain items at the time of preliminary plan. One being justifying the change of the location of this location conflicts with the safety comprehensive plan, and that is the area of the parkland. Two, substantially reduce or eliminate the number of arrangements. Three, conduct a traffic study and show that the traffic generated will not negatively impact the subdivision, nor via safety hazard due to there being one entrance or exit of the subdivision. And number four, provide engineering documentation that shows the development will not cause flooding. To ensure that what we've been saying all along before the residents, in section two, it states, "Approval of the concept plan by the mayor and city council shall not qualify the plan as a final design, but shall be considered permission to prepare a preliminary development plan with detailed plans and specifications as required by the Lockport Development Code and subject to the conditions as identified in section one above."
Thank you, ma'am.
But it doesn't say that they have to put an egress road in.
It says if it's necessitated by a study, it's very well, we're not held to not having to put one in, or the Chen's. And that's my opinion on this. Study comes back and says, "Hey, you know what? You need an egress. You guys need an egress. It really doesn't matter who at Broken Arrow doesn't want to do one or not. That's what it calls for, and they'll know they can't move forward without one." Brian, what do you got?
Yeah, thanks. Again, a lot of discussion here, a lot of good thoughts here. As Alderman Vandermeer said, that again, this is not a rubber stamp of approval. I think there's many hurdles here that the Chen family has to do to make this come to a head. So, the thing I would like to see reflected in the minutes tonight would be that should the developer, that they should have a developer or sale pending when they return for approvals on residential. So, and who's going to be building these? Because I think we spent a lot of time with these, and we want this thing, if it's going to be developed, so be it. But again, the idea here is, you selling that property, I think, would not happen if you come forth with that developer and then move forward with that. So, that, I think that helps us and helps, I think, staff out too, knowing that you have a developer, if that's going to take place. Again, I want to reiterate that there is many hurdles here for you, the Chen family, to do. This is not a rubber stamp. So, I'd like to see what comes out of this. And you talked about, I believe you talked about, I don't know if it was words in your mouth, that you weren't interested in another roadway, but however, maybe as you proceed, you may change your mind. I don't know. I don't know what you're going to do, but however, I think that the idea is there, I think you have a clear idea of what people are looking for, is what I'm going to say. So, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think, obviously, this has been an emotional issue, and I think that what we're talking about here tonight is allowing the process to take place. And it's, and the discussion also tonight ought to be about fairness. And although this isn't a perfect comparison, if, you know, you have one property owner in the city of Lockport that wanted to put something on his or her property, and two or three other residents opposed it for whatever reason, it wouldn't be right for the city to just allow for one side of the argument to be heard. I think it's good to hear all sides and allow the research to be done. And it's only then that we can, I think, make an informed decision about what's right and what's not right. I mean, after the Chen's do the study, their due diligence, I think, they, you never know, they may find it more marketable to install. They can open up a whole new traffic lane, you know, to Orland Park. I don't know what they might find if they do a traffic study or a market study on how they're going to configure the building. You never know. But I mean, that's the thing about tonight. If we don't allow this to move forward, we're not really allowing that property owner to investigate thoroughly what's possible, what's not possible, what's safe, what's not safe. And so, while it's easy to stand in opposition to this, it's really not fair, I don't think, to...
It's not fair for residents either.
I think it's right that, as council members, we allow residents to speak their piece. We listen, and we responsibly take into account what their concerns are. But at the same time, if, as I mentioned earlier, you wanted to do something on your property and the city shut you down because they heard negative voices opposed to it, you would say, "That's not right. Let me speak my piece. Let me do the research." And so, I think that's what we've got happening here tonight, is, you know, for all the concerns that were raised here by some of the council members, the concerns about the egress and the ingress, and the safety, you know, yes, those are real concerns. Yes, they're valid concerns, but we're not really giving the property owner the opportunity to address those concerns, to see if it's feasible, whether or not his plans will address them. So, I don't, while it's an easy vote to oppose tonight, the reality is that when you vote no on this proposal here tonight, you're not giving a property owner his right to do his, complete his due diligence to use his property to the utmost of its capability. And also, just as a side note, the argument that we're doing this because we want to protect a business in the city of Lockport is really not an accurate portrayal of the discussion that occurred surrounding that. All, the only comment that was made at the previous meeting is that unless we give a business owner an opportunity to explore those, those different kinds of configurations for his business, then we're really not protecting that, our city's best interests with regard to business. It's not about one specific business, one specific business's ability to stay solvent. It's about making sure that that business owner can explore those options properly and fairly. So, I'm also going to support this. I think that, I think that, you know, when I measure a development and whether or not it's solid, I compare it to my own family, and if I were living in the neighborhood, and I'm going to do the same for this as it moves forward. And I'm going to hold it to a high standard as well. The example that was brought about when that traffic study is done, I think that's a good suggestion to make, that we make sure we do the study when the traffic counts are highest, so that we're getting an accurate representation that study is done at that time. But I don't think it's right, and I couldn't move forward, you know, if I, when I make future decisions as a council member, I want to use the same standard, one to the other. And what I try to do in all of my decisions is to make sure I've got all the information possible. And I feel like if I vote no on this tonight, I'm not going to be, have that opportunity to have all the information possible. That's why I'm going to support it.
Chris, what do you got?
There's been a lot said here tonight about what problems there are with the concept plan as it is. I also trust in our honorable city attorney's opinion as to any approval here tonight being conditional, and with the comments here tonight, and the language in the resolution, that any approval would be conditional. If the record isn't clear based on what was said already, I'll make it clear. I won't vote yes unless, I won't vote yes for any preliminary plan unless you find a way to address the single ingress and egress. But I don't want to hold up, at this stage, at the concept stage, your ability to go ahead and try and address those issues and move forward with a plan that works for not only you, but the residents, because in my mind, they come first. So, I'm going to vote yes, but I just want to qualify that with the condition that I believe that this ingress and egress issue needs to be resolved.
And you know what? I usually don't have to vote unless there's a tie. Doesn't sound like there's going to be a tie tonight, but I will vote, just so that I can go on record. It is, I agree with the affirmatives at this point, with all the conditions that have also been mentioned. You know, like I said, just because people feel there doesn't need to be a second egress, if it's shown to need one, then so be it. That's what it's going to take. I do like being able to give businesses the opportunity, and this is a pretty substantial area of our city. And so, making sure that, and even if it wasn't, even if it's a smaller business, we still give opportunities. But there's no doubt that this is not going to go forward unless you guys really meet a lot of these requirements. And so, there is, as I said last time, it's like, going to be like threading a needle at a full run. There's a lot of challenges. And, you know, folks from Broken Arrow, we hear you. I understand exactly the problems. And Michelle, I also agree with what you said, and Pete mentioned it, doing a traffic study this week is not really going to be accurate. So, they're going to have to do a traffic study when there is the kind of traffic that we expect during the busy season. So, those kinds of things are going to be important. We want accurate information, and otherwise, this is not going to fly.
Mayor, as an addendum to the traffic study, having worked for IDOT and their department called Databank, the, a traffic study like this, if you're doing a traffic study and you want to do one for, just for general knowledge, you'd do that during the week. Because this is a boutique development and has golf courses, golf course, et cetera, and because it has traffic flows at different times, the traffic study should be twofold. It should be done on a weekday, and it should be done on a Saturday while golf is in play, because then you will get a more accurate, also on Saturdays, you get people doing errands, et cetera. So, that makes a big difference in this traffic study. And it's, so it should be done on both days, and then you could get a more accurate count of what the real traffic access and egress to this development is.
And when they do do the traffic study, and we, you know, get the copy, and they'll have our community people review it...
We have to stipulate that it's two days.
Well, if the, we don't build the documents.
We have to stipulate it and tell them to do it.
All right. Ed, a roll call?
Goretta?
No.
Marinowski?
No.
Vandermeer?
Yes.
Deskin?
Yes.
Turner?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Colarelli?
Yes.
Eppadona?
Yes.
And Mayor, you said you were going to vote?
Yes.
And Mayor votes yes, so it's six days, and three days. Motion carried.
All right. Next thing? We've got 163rd. Can I find it on my fancy iPad here? Oh, 21. So I need a motion for the concept plan for 163rd Street, Gauger. Motion for that?
So moved.
All right. This is Alderman Deskin, taken by Alderman Colarelli. Some discussion on that?
The attorney from the developer is coming this evening, if there are any questions.
Do you have any questions?
I, I will.
Yeah.
I don't know, I didn't want to step in front. Is he, where's the attorney? Oh, oh, right there, okay, thank you. So the questions that Mr. Martin brought up, I just wanted to address now, the, the overall total of docks is a little over 200 docks, right? And by concept, I know that that could change as we move along in the process. Mr. Martin had mentioned that there were two small buildings originally, and then, you know, they've been joined into one. What was the overall increase in dock numbers? Do you know that? From the original two building to the one?
Well, just to start, my name's Abigail...
Oh yeah, sorry.
That's okay. I'm an attorney at Rosenoben Whittaker, 30 West Jefferson in Neverville. When you say, and, and full disclosure, my associate has been working more in depth on this case, so I might not have all of the specifics you're requesting. So when you say the docks, you mean the, the truck docks, that's what you're referring to?
Yeah, the truck docks that were on it, the road, the building, the building that used to be buildings that's right along the side of 163rd Street.
Um, let me take a look, you know, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
Do you know?
Yeah.
They did, I'm not sure.
And I apologize, because I did not know, this is the first I've heard from one, so I didn't know that that was a concern, that's the only reason I'm asking the question, I didn't, but just, and then while, while they're looking that up, while you're looking that up, the other question I have, and I know we've talked about it in the past, is it's valid to consider, and I know the city is planning long-term for the development of that Pandu, what, the properties of the Pandu site, and anything else that might occur in that area that's zoned for trucks like this. I just want to allow the staff to assure residents that the plans for the city for capital improvement are taking that into account, that, you know, we're going to be, you know, and I don't know, we might not know just yet if, if it's going to be a four lane or a three lane, if we're going to, you know, how we're going to upgrade that road, but it is something that we're all interested in knowing, that, that whatever's happening, how, whatever kind of trucks are coming out of there, that in the future, we can, we have a plan in place that we can not only upgrade it, but also maintain it as the road has wear and tear on it, so, if you could do that.
Just to, to go back to the, the Plan Commission report was, was written, in terms of comparison of the concept plan made before you this evening and the approved preliminary plan. Now, unfortunately, we did not do a comparison on the docks, but in terms of the number of buildings on proposed concept plan is four, the approved preliminary plan was five. The total building area on the concept plan is 837,700 square feet. On the preliminary approved plan, it was 8,000, 802,810 square feet. The range of building sizes on the concept plan, the smallest is 163,000, the largest is 275. Now, the preliminary plan, the smallest was 125, and the largest was 216. The size of the northern buildings, which we're discussing, originally, there were two buildings at 125,000 square foot each. Under the concept plan, it's one building now of 275,240 square feet. There has been, obviously, a slight increase in the amount of square footage overall with this proposal versus with the approved proposal. Now, one of the things that was also mentioned, I think, maybe at the Plan Commission level, was, you know, you know, with, with some of the changes that were being suggested to make the one larger building kind of look less extensive, was to not only darken the color in like it's about the halfway point, do a pushback, but also to make sure that the pushback was significant enough to house the landscaping that was being proposed there. And one of the commissioners justified that comment by saying, well, you're already, you're making a bigger building than what you would have had with the two. So there was some expectation that perhaps then we can reduce that building to equate to what that square footage would have been ever just two. And I, unfortunately, don't recall what the applicant had said, but that was a comment that was made, is that if we had two buildings at 125,000 square feet each, lane 250, and now we have one building at 275, we have 25,000 square feet to play with to do some additional, maybe setback areas to kind of offset the articulation of the building, so it's less extensive, and still kind of gives the image of, of two separate buildings being one building, but using architectural features.
Pam, I remember that the, the reason that they were going for the one long building rather than the two buildings, there was a legal reason for doing it, saying that there might be an issue of trans trespassing from one building to the other if trucks are something between buildings, because one would own, one building would own some sort of the property. It was something about avoiding legal issues of...
Yeah. Well, they, they said that the market study, or the studies that they've done based on other projects where that was, where a similar situation existed, that the one building that was most removed from the visibility, such as 355, was the building that was then most difficult to market and most difficult to get someone to buy into. And in addition to that, depending on who the individual tenants were, you know, one may have to fence off it because they're storing something out there that needs to be protected, and so you, you might not be able to achieve that cross-access that you get when you have one, one building.
And to address your question about the larger area and the overall plan, it's my understanding that the city recently did update the corridor, the I-355 corridor master plan, which identified the, the subject property as light industrial/business park. And the proposed use and the modification that is required by the prospective end-user to achieve that use doesn't change anything about the, you know, light industrial nature of the use of the property. But in addition to that access easement issue, I believe my colleague did mention that the prospective end-user has a condition to signing on to Lisa's property, that the overall square footage be a certain amount. Without this change, we can't achieve that square footage. And in addition to that, while solving the access easement problem, it, it allows for the development of the property to connect utilities, things of that nature, to the larger area, while also solving the practical issues like snow removal, for example, that would remain were, if the site plan remained with those two smaller buildings.
Okay. You don't matter, um... I will have to say this about this project, this project and this area has been in, this is not a recent thing. I mean, there, we've, this has been zoned this way for a while, we've had other proposals, we had one for a, a giant cold storage place there that would have dominated the landscape, and that was turned down. And so, I mean, if, if it's not something that's in the middle of a subdivision like the Broken Arrow deal is, and, and this one, I will argue for the project because the, Lockport does need the revenue, Lockport needs the jobs, and Lockport needs, and this would be a definite plus for that. As far as noise, I live in the old part of town, and I hear semis, Harleys, you name it, I hear them, and, and trains and everything else, so, but now, now I can't hear trains because, you know, you get used to all that stuff. My, my grandfather lived on Highway 61 when it went through originally. He said, for the first six months, he heard it, after that, he didn't know it was there. So, so the deal is that, is that we do need to press forward with development, this is one that does not, as they say, is not encompassed by, by subdivisions, so there is always a give and take in that, I understand the, the residents, I really do, and, but I, I think the merits of this project, if you would have seen the prospectus for the cold storage, you would have said, oh my God, what are you doing? So, but, so this is something, and, you know, Romeoville has industrial areas, and, and they're prospering because, because of that, because they're a, they're now a hub, I mean, the more you build, the more people look at you, so, and they have a lot of jobs. So that's the, that's the deal.
The prospective end-users, are they 24/7, 365, are they regular business hours?
Um, you know, I'm not sure. I believe it is... Um, I think the information I have is just that they're a general warehouse user, is my understanding. In terms of operation, I can get that information for you if, if you'd like.
And, and I think also to just remind everyone, when the presentation was made, also the last time, I believe the applicant noted that this particular user that have interest in this building is probably one of the more desirable type users in the building of this site, because it is predominantly more office oriented as opposed to being more transport oriented.
I believe, didn't it quote 80 to 100 office personnel, whereas, I mean, you're compared to ML, it's two or three, right? I mean, it's a, it's a shipping and an AP clerk for most part, ML. I, I have a couple of points, well, one, Kelly, I don't think you can complain about Harley, this is where it comes from, your garage, and two, I actually think that the cold storage just carries Springs 5, right?
I keep my Harley in Romeoville.
Not this site, but I actually, I'm sorry, from the resident's point of view, I don't live as close as you do, I mean, nobody, nobody really does, but I take this path every day, I live just a little, little south of this. And frankly, personally, I would love to see this, love this to be an open field forever, I'd love all the area around us to be an open field. But that's not realistic, right? I mean, as you acknowledge, this is already zoned M1, they're not asking for a zoning change. I do have concerns about what Gauger Road is going to be like, that's how I get to and from work, that's how I get my kids to and from daycare, all that stuff. But you have some improvement plans for Gauger Road that are, that are being put in place with this development. I don't, I don't know that we can turn away development just because we're in an approved zone already because we're scared of traffic, because, you know, personally, again, I would, I would love to not have any trucks on Gauger Road either, but I don't know if that's realistic. The only thing that we're really being asked here is to allow them to go from four building, from five buildings to four, one of them will be larger, however, when you read through, you know, Planning Commission meetings, and even the document we have in front of us, they are accommodating on some of the easements, some of the site kind of stuff, and this will be, in theory, depending on who the end-user is, could be slightly more desirable of a user than, than what is probably in most M1s. So as much as selfishly, I'd like to be the neighbor who doesn't have trucks on my route, I, I, that's not representing the city, I, I can't do that. I think that the small change that they're asking for from original M1 plan to current M1 plan is not that significant to where, in my mind, that I'm going to block this, I will support it. And frankly, you know, when I read through the planning zoning minutes, how they've aligned the buildings, you know, that front building is going to be east-west, basically, to, will block a little bit of noise, they're willing to make some of the extra berms and different things that were being asked. Given that there's an M1 that's zoned there and can go there, I think that it's accommodating enough that I'll, I'll, I'll support the venue, or the, the proposal. But I do have concerns, I mean, if something's going to go next to Pandu as well, not that, you know, each one of them aren't responsible for all traffic on Gauger, but as a whole, we have to make sure that we're, we're prepared for this. But, but I will support the, the proposal.
Also, all truck traffic is not semis, all truck traffic is not diesel. Truck traffic can be box trucks, it can be straight jobs, it can be a...
I like, I like nobody on my route, Kelly. I want my straight shot, I don't want, I don't want anybody interrupting my drive in the morning.
We could arrange the police to do that.
That's what I need to do, that's why, it's a good use of taxpayers.
Pam, was this unanimous out of the Planning Commission?
It was with the, yeah.
Yeah, just one other thought, Pete, because you said you hadn't heard about this before. You know, when, I had talked to the Planning Commission about this, and with the change of the, two, basically, it's the two buildings, they're just connecting them in the middle, is what it was.
No, I, I knew about that change, I didn't know about the increase in docks, I didn't, I didn't know...
Okay. Well, whatever that square footage in the back allows for that many extra docks, like maybe three. But, you know, I, the Planning Commission was concerned about it, and when I talked to them, they, you know, they mentioned that the two buildings were what was talked about a while back, and I asked them and, and the petitioner to go to the residents and reach out when they didn't have to, and, and work with them to find some of these, you know, whether it's how we deal with the landscaping, try to find a way to keep this one long building broken up a little bit. So I think that the petitioners worked, and the Planning Commission worked as well at that request to make that happen. So I think they've done a, a good job breaking up the middle of this building a little bit. I asked them to paint a blue sky in the middle, but apparently it wasn't going to be enough, so, any case, anybody else have any things they want to say? All right, and do a roll call.
Goretta?
Yes.
Marinowski?
Yes.
Vandermeer?
Yes.
Deskin?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Colarelli?
Yes.
Eppadona?
Yes.
It is motion carried.
All right. Any new business? All right, need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Turner, second, and Alderman, Amir, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With Ron, God, there's no executive sessions, I already...
No, I was thinking the same thing.
I already liked this new lawyer.
Ha!
No offense.